All right, good evening. It's 6:00 PM, September 27, 2017. I'd like to open the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local Mashpee TV. So next, if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome in new associate members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to take a moment to read the appointment letter. Okay, this is from the Town of Mashpee Office of Selectmen, dated September 26, and it's to Sharon Sangalier, 10 Sherwood Drive, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. Dear Ms. Sangalier, please be advised that on Monday, September 25, 2017, Board of Selectmen voted to appoint you as an associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The term of the appointment will expire June 30, 2020. In order to complete the appointment process, necessary for you to be sworn in at the Town Clerk's office. I know you've done that, so congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, I was absent on the last meeting, so I'll be stepping down in the first two continued hearings, and Bill will take over as the chair for that hearing. So sitting on tonight's first hearing will be our three regular board members and our two associate board members. So Jim, would you read the first two continued hearings? We'll hear them both, and then we'll separately vote on each request.
The continued hearings are open. 29 Overlook Knoll Road, owners Frederick J. and Linda Nadoff request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling and deck on property located in R3 zoning district and the Pompansett-Overlake District. Map 118, parcel 33, Mashpee, Massachusetts. This hearing was continued, or is continued from September 13, 2017, at the request of the applicant. Second, opening the 29 Overlook Knoll Road, owners Frederick J. and Linda Nadoff requesting a variance under 174-31 of the zoning bylaws for relief from rear and side setbacks and 174-33 setback from the wetlands to raise and replace a single-family dwelling and deck on property located in R3 zoning district and the Pompansett-Overlake District. Map 118, parcel 33, Mashpee, Massachusetts. This is continued from September 13, 2017, at the request of the applicant.
Okay, so before we get started and before I step down, I'll just read one thing. I can see there's many people in attendance tonight, showing most of them have something to say regarding these two hearings. So in tonight's continued hearings, we're here to listen to the requests of the applicant requesting a written finding and also a request for a variance. We're going to limit all comments and questions and concerns to these requests and none of this. The board will only entertain that, not going to entertain anything outside the board's purview of zoning. Everybody get a chance to speak, so you hold your questions till the end, and Bill will ask people to come up, and they can have their say, just give your name and address, and we'll go from there. So Bill?
Okay. Go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at our last meeting, there was a discussion whether there was a need for a variance or not, and at that time, the board informed me that they were going to discuss with Town Council and Mr. Mendoza if a variance was required. Before I go any further, when I find out what the results of that meeting were, Mr. Mendoza felt uncomfortable giving me an answer because it would possibly be a problem for the open meeting bylaws. So if I could discuss that and see exactly how that went forward.
Yes, it's true. We did have a meeting with Town Council. We didn't specifically discuss your particular case. We discussed written findings in general, variances in general, and when, in fact, an applicant is looking for a written finding, would they then also need to request a variance? My understanding of the instructions that we received from the Town Council was that if somebody comes in to make an application for a written finding and they are not increasing the nonconformity of what exists today, and they're staying within the same footprint, they would not require a variance.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, based on that, would it be possible for me to respectfully withdraw the variance application that we have submitted?
If that's your desire.
Yes.
Is that your request?
It's my request, yes.
Do I, anybody have any questions on his request to remove his application for a variance? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my name is John Lynch.
You need to speak into the mic.
My name is John Lynch. I'm the immediate abutter to, the petition is lot nine on the plan. I am at lot 10. I spoke to the board last week, and it seems to me, we were all noticed, we have the plans of the applicant requesting variances. It seems to me that it would be premature for the board to rule without hearing the evidence tonight as to whether a variance is required or not required. You may recall at the last meeting, I and some of the other neighbors spoke, and my attorney, Alexander Joyce, who was in the parking lot on the way in, spoke as well, and he's prepared to address these things. It seems to me that asking for such a finding at this point in the middle of the hearing without hearing all of the testimony and a discussion of the bylaw and the statutes and the case law that impact that would be premature. What nobody, here's Mr. Joyce now, what nobody wants to have happen is to be in a position, an uncomfortable position of taking an appeal from whatever this board decides, either the petitioner or the abutters and the neighbors. And it seems to me to do that, to allow the withdrawal of variance now without hearing the arguments opposed to that, are premature and not something the town wants to weigh into. Most of the people in here are taxpayers in the town, and I think we should hear the full argument and not put the town in a position where they might possibly have to waste resources by being steered the wrong way here by this preliminary and premature request by the petitioner's representative.
I'm not sure I understand your argument. Is your argument that the petitioner does not have the right to withdraw his application for a variance?
Well, I'm not saying that ultimately he does not have that right, but it seems to me then the hearing should start again. There should be notice, we should find out what he's seeking to do. Is he now applying for a special permit, applying for administrative relief but needing the, ignoring the setbacks and so on and so forth? And I think it's premature on the board's part to allow this at this point in time without hearing all of the evidence. Perhaps Mr. Joyce can amplify my remarks, but I think, you know, we'd like to have a full record here for the board to make its ultimate decision and not permit this at this point in time, but listen to everything, and then if you decide after hearing everything that a variance isn't required, then you can do that. But to allow it at this point...
Is your recommendation that he withdraw his application in total and start over?
I, I'm trying to strike a balance between the rights of the neighbors and myself and the taxpayer here, excuse me, the petitioner, I beg your pardon, and I think to just make a turn into right field at this point, drop the plans that they submitted in support of a variance, their plans delineate the relief they need, nine and a half feet on sea view, coming toward my house by almost two feet, and other relief, that, you know, the board should hear from both sides before this is permitted. And if I may, I'd like to just give Mr. Joyce, our attorney, who's looked at this very carefully, the opportunity to amplify the remarks that I'm making, please.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Could you please use the mic and...
Alexander Joyce, I represent Mr. Lynch. He's the manager of the LLC that is at 25 Over Knoll Road. This has been a, I'd say it's complicated because we're dealing with setbacks and we're dealing with finite measurements. And what, I think what the applicant has done here, or the petitioner, the plans are quite literally confusing, and I spent, you know, literally, John and I spent hours looking at these plans and trying to come up to really identify what the petitioner is seeking here. And I know the building inspector, of course, reviewed the plans, and he came out with a memo on September 5th that said he, yes, he's short 9.5 feet on the sea view side. Now, the building inspector said the front yard, but it really is the rear yard. So you have to look at the bylaw. What does your bylaw require for setbacks? And I'd like to submit into the record some portions of the bylaw, and I'd like just to walk the board through what we believe, what is the front yard, what is the rear yard, and what's the side yard? What does the petitioner plan here, and how does it impact Mr. Lynch's property, which is 15 feet away from the property line? And what I also did is, John, may I just...
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused that we're discussing something that I want to withdraw. Well, I understand they'll have a right and they'll have a lot of time to speak when I talk about a written finding, but I'm looking to withdraw a variance application, and it's my right as petitioner to withdraw something.
I think...
Well, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, may I, through the chair, ask the petitioner to identify how he came up with the setbacks for the front yard? In his written finding request. He just might have submitted with his written finding request, and I think I'm entitled to ask the petitioner how he came up with the calculation...
Can I see the written finding, the actual application, please? If the application is incorrect in what you were looking for...
Then I will move to the following finding until we get back to it as well if there's some issue.
If you've got incorrect information on your original application, either the variance or the written finding or both, I would see no other alternative but to withdraw both and come back with an application that requests what you're actually looking to do. If what the application you originally submitted was not what you're actually looking to do, then you've got a lot of people doing a lot of work.
I believe that, if that's the case, then we withdraw all of the, based on the results of meeting with Town Council, I think it appropriate to not waste the board's time and discuss a variance that appears we no longer need.
You need to speak into the mic.
To withdraw a variance that appears, based on Town Council's comments, that we no longer need.
What's your pleasure?
I...
Right now, I believe that you've got information that you have requested in your application that has misled some people into believing you want something that you don't want. If that's the case, I would suggest, I mean, you can do what you want, we'll move forward if that's your choice, that you reapply, you withdraw and reapply and ask for what you actually want. If that's a written finding and you show that you're rebuilding a new home on a lot that has a previously nonconforming condition and you're not increasing that nonconformity, if that's what you're looking to do, that's the way you should file it. That's not the way you filed this.
Okay, based the written finding or the variances, there are another written finding that you...
Well, I think because you've intermingled both of these, or we all have, due to the way these were introduced and argued, I think the water has become so muddy that people are looking at both of these at one time, and it's becoming very confusing as to what you actually wanted to get from us in the written finding versus the variance. They were tied together, and if the variance was tied to the written finding, the variance has different numbers on it, if you will, then you've confused the whole issue. So I think what you need to do is come back, you can do what you want.
And respectfully, I think I would like to withdraw both of them, but I just couldn't confirm what the number is that the issue is with, so I don't make that mistake again.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion. Motion would be to accept the petitioner's request for...
Make a motion that we accept the petitioner's request to withdraw...
Without prejudice.
The written fi... One at a time.
The written finding for 29 Overlook Knoll, owners Frederick J. and Linda Nadoff, requesting a written finding under the Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling and deck on property located in R3 zoning district and the Pompansett-Overlake District, map 118, parcel 33, Mashpee, Mass.
Yeah, I'll have a second on that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion to withdraw the petitioner's request for 29 Overlook Knoll Road, owners Frederick J. and Linda Nadoff, requesting a variance under Section 174-31 of the zoning bylaws for relief from the rear and side setbacks in Section 174-33 setback from wetlands to raise and replace a single-family dwelling and deck on property located in R3 zoning district and the Pompansett-Overlake District, map 118, parcel 33, Mashpee, Mass.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just ask one question, and that is, it was brought up about Overlook Knoll being the frontage, that's my opinion. I have listed sea view as as the rear of the building, but I've used a street frontage because it's also a street. Is that a correct way to go forward here? Because if it's a rear, then I don't need as much relief.
You have two...
I think it's similar to a corner lot.
Right.
And maybe similar to the same as a corner lot, so they both would be street setbacks.
Correct.
But is that...
Excuse me, no.
Go ahead.
I object to these answers because what it does is it, it kind of muddies the waters for a future plan, okay? He's asking the board for preliminary determination from the ZBA. That request should go to the building inspector. He's the chief enforcement officer for a finding on that, and his decision can be appealed under 48, Section 15...
Sure.
...to you. So I don't think the board should get into telling him what to do...
I totally agree.
You know, don't put the carpet before the horse, and I don't want to prejudice anyone's rights here, including anyone in the public.
No. I think if you have a question as to how you want to file a new petition, you should speak with the zoning officer.
I apologize to the board for asking the question. That was not my intent. So thank you very much, and we'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are his neighbors.
He's representing the neighbors. He's representing the neighbors.
Is this guy going to be the homeowner?
No, he's the, that's the engineer.
Oh, okay.
The homeowners were sitting on the back.
Okay. Nice seeing you. That looks good.
All right, we all sit here. All right, Jim, would you read the first new hearing?
New hearing, 64 Hilltop Road, owner Susan E. Lynn requests a special permit under 174-45 dot four of the zoning bylaws for a change in ownership of an existing permitted accessory apartment of property located in R5 zoning district, map 41, parcel 56, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Oh, new to Mashpee and new to this, so...
So just for the record, I...
Susan E. Lynn, I live at 64 Hilltop Road, Mashpee.
Thank you. So tell us exactly what you'd like to do.
I have an existing accessory apartment in my, first level of my house. It's approximately 500 square feet. It's a studio apartment. I believe you've been sent pictures of it. I have one copy of pictures here. It has two points of egress or access, whichever way you look at it. One is through the garage, two garage doors and a side exit that has a light over and a doorbell, and the other entrance is through the front door, and I have pictures of that. It looks like one door. You open it up, and then there's two doors, one to the basement apartment and one to my house.
Do you know, has there been any changes in the apartment or the house since this was approved? And it was approved when?
2011.
Other than furniture, no.
So no additions to the house, no subtractions, none of that?
I can't say anything up until I purchased it five weeks ago.
Gotcha. You haven't done anything.
But I haven't done anything, no.
Okay. So that's something we need to check on?
I think we will have heard of it.
It was approved, I mean, through that timeframe, so...
Right. So the question is, has it, since we approved it, did they change anything without telling us? That's the question. All right.
Was it, just quickly, was it, is it one bedroom?
It's a studio.
It's a studio, so it's just one big open, okay. So it was, it couldn't have been divided up then, huh? So there isn't much you can do to it.
Well, I don't know if they added or subtracted from the size.
Yeah, but I can see what's done. Well, I thought maybe it was supposed to be approved as a one bedroom, and now there's two bedrooms, that would be someone through a wall in the middle.
No.
But if it's a studio, like...
And again, there's pictures, and I only have one copy, but I can show you those.
I saw them, they were actually sent out to the board.
I'm good.
Questions, comments, anyone?
No, I think we should read in the...
Yeah, let's do that. So why don't I start? I'll read the Board of Health comments. A septic system inspection was performed on November 11, 2015. As long as the property transfers before November 11, 2017, another septic inspection will not be required, no further comment. That's from the Board of Health. Inspections Department. The area was zoned R5. The applicant is seeking a request for a special permit under 174-45 point four of the zoning bylaws for a change in ownership of an existing permitted accessory apartment in accordance with 174-45 dot four I. The special permit granted under this section shall run with the property owner and shall lapse upon sale or transfer to another property owner. So that's why you came back, and we appreciate your contacting...
Certainly.
...the zoning board and the building department. Conservation, let's see if they have any comments. No wetlands. Jurisdiction.
Correct.
Okay. This is all we have for comments.
That's it.
Okay, what's the date that it was?
I have it here. 7/19/2011.
Okay.
Sounds like six years old.
Yeah. So here's the decision for a special permit. I'm looking at the original one. It's SP 2011-19, decision for a special permit. It was for Robert D. and Grace Varney, 64 Hilltop Road, Mashpee, Mass. And it was also registered in the...
Registry of Deeds.
Registry of Deeds. It says book number 25571, page 79. What's that?
I'll go with the 36298.
Yeah, what's that? Is that like a number? 36298, 7/19/11, at 12:03 PM it was registered. And basically, it's a special permit signed by all five people in the positive, allowing the special permit for the accessory apartment.
Okay?
Yes.
You said you just recently purchased the property?
Correct.
So it's safe to say, as far as public safety goes, the fire department would have been involved, taken a look at all the smoke detectors and such, because it wouldn't have passed sale at that time.
Exactly.
So I'm going to have to make the assumption at that point that it's safe for anybody to be using because it hasn't been looked at.
So this is a condition?
Do they have to go back out and look?
No.
Actually, there's three exits. There's up the stairs, the front door, out the back, through the garage, and the side door, and then there's a window that pops open with a ladder that goes south. So for 500 square feet, you have plenty of ways of getting...
Right, plus the smoke detectors were checked, so...
Correct.
Oh, it was done already.
Right, because she just bought it.
Oh, well, we should have bought the house, too. They didn't mention it.
You know this stuff, right?
Yeah, I've seen her do that.
Yeah, yeah. Especially when you take the little plastic thing off, a little, you know. Well, yes, that's what I'm saying, is it's been inspected by the fire department, so as far as safety goes, at least we know that's been addressed.
So any change in ownership, that's standard procedure?
Yes, when somebody buys it, the fire department goes in, they check the smoke and seal the detectors.
Okay. Any further comments, anybody on the board? Anybody in the audience have any comments on this hearing? Seeing none, Scott, would you like to make a motion?
I'd love to make a motion. We'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a special permit for 64 Hilltop Road owner Susan E. Lynn, which requested a special permit under Section 174-45 dot four of the zoning bylaws for a change in ownership of an existing permitted accessory apartment on a property located in R5 zoning district, map 41, parcel 56, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions of a special permit under MGL 40A, Section 9. The second one being, the board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions for the accessory apartment under Section 174-45 dot four, specifically item one of the Town of Mashpee zoning bylaws. Number three, referencing the same conditions that were approved and granted in the special permit case number SP 2011-19 at the ZBA public hearings on June 8, 2011. Number four, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record.
I'll second.
Okay, hold on just one second. Also, you're going to need to register this at the Registry of Deeds in Barnstable, and I don't know if there's a time limit on registering it.
There's no time. For me, there's no time. But then I'm done, I'll let you know. Yeah, and then... And then I'll take it. And then I'll take it to the Registry of Deeds. I assume I can't rent it until it's registered.
Then you bring us back a copy showing it's been recorded.
Well, I'll ask you to make a list of...
Okay, we have a second. So, sitting on this one will be myself, four regular board members, and Jim will sit on this one. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Very good. Good luck. There's some paperwork. Do we need to sign off?
Counselor, you shouldn't have so many books when you have to have an arm handbrake or whatever.
Wow.
Oh, yeah. This is what I used to do before.
Are you working here on the...
I actually work... I live, I live in Mashpee, but I work in the middle bar, which is...
Do I need to stamp the old...
Probably. Wouldn't hurt, would it?
Okay. Works for me.
But how are we going to know if you're looking at the paperwork 10 years down the road that it was reapproved?
All right. Could I get two copies, please, of the old special permit?
You have one.
Kate, do we have another? There's probably one in here.
Need one more, please.
Got it, got it, got it.
There we go. Never mind.
Counselor, are you looking for pity with that thing on your hand? Are you looking for pity? You'll be sitting on this next one. Okay. Jim, would you read the next new hearing?
Opening the hearing at 55 Monahansett Road. Owners Robert H. and Mara B. Whitstein request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws, excuse me, to allow for an alteration and extension of a porch deck and house on property located in R3 zoning district and the pump and asset overlay district. Map 123, parcel 100, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Corrane, and I have the pleasure of representing Robert and Mara Whitstein in connection with the request for a specific finding relative to constructing in addition to their dwelling at 55 Monahansett Road in the pump and asset section town. The property of 55 Monahansett consists of some 9,138 square feet. It has 85 feet of frontage along Monahansett, and it backs up to Dean's Pond. As such, under the pump and asset overlay district requirements, the lot is a conforming lot. There is a ranch-style, single-family, three-bedroom residence on the lot, which currently conforms to the zoning requirements with the exception of the fact that the current setback from the westerly sideline is 14.4 feet, which is less than the 15 feet that is prescribed by the law. Highlighted here in yellow, the proposed additions to the structure, which will increase the nonconformity from 14.4 to 14.3 feet. And I would also point out that the structure, the addition to the structure, is getting closer to Monahansett Road. However, in discussing the increase in the, or the creation of what would ordinarily be a new nonconforming condition, which in my opinion, based upon my understanding of the law, is the only scenario which would require variance relief. We have looked at the average setbacks of the two structures on either side. One of those sits back 11.8 feet from the front yard line, property line, and the other 30.9 feet from the front yard line. And as such, the average of those two setbacks boils down to 21.3 feet, which is what we are proposing here. So, in essence, 21.3 on one side, 22.3 on the other. So, in essence, we are, in fact, consistent with what zoning requires in this particular instance. So, there is no need for what might otherwise be considered to be a variance scenario because this is a new condition. Because this is setback 14.4 feet, and we're going to 14.3, and because the structure will remain at a distance of 35 feet from the bordering vegetated wetland, I believe we do need the specific finding from the Board of Appeals to the extent that the board would make its determination that what is being proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. I would point out that in addition to the highlighted areas that you see here, the applicants are proposing to put a second story on this building. And I have photographs of the building itself, which are on the left side of the board as you see it, and then some photographs of three other structures in the neighborhood, which will give the board a feel for the idea that what is being proposed here is consistent and not out of character with other structures in this particular neighborhood. We will continue to be under the 20% lot coverage requirement. And as I said, other than on the westerly sideline where we're going from 14.4 to 14.3 and the distance from the wetland, the addition on the other side is getting closer to the easterly sideline, but it's still 19-plus feet, so it conforms to the 15-foot requirement under the zoning bylaws. So, as such, I would suggest to the board that what we're proposing here does not create a condition which is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, does not create a scenario where additional parking is required. It is a three-bedroom structure now, will continue to be a three-bedroom. And I would also suggest to the board that the board would be within its discretionary powers to determine that at 14.3, as opposed to 14.4, there is an adequate setback on the easterly side of the structure. And as I said, we're not changing the 35 feet to the, to the wetland. Bob Whitstein is with me this evening. If the board has any questions for him, be more than happy to respond. If the board has any questions for me, I too will be more than happy to respond.
What's the proposed height of the building?
Good question.
Is this pump and asset, is this a 30-foot height restriction or 35?
The pump and asset overlay is...
I can look it up right here.
I thought all pump and asset was 30. I didn't know if this parts are, I could be wrong.
30 feet. 30 feet in the overlay district.
So, I mean, it's a walkout in the back, so I don't know what average grade is. That, I mean, that's just one issue. I mean, it's not really a zoning issue.
I don't see a dimension on the plan, but we understand...
Well, that's a walkout.
We would have to be within the 30.
Yeah, so that roof line might have to come down. I know it's not really what you're asking for now, but it's just something that jumped out to me.
Yeah, we would not be seeking relief from height, to no point implying for height variance.
Condition?
But it will have to be. Don't have a dimension. It's not in any of these plans.
Before any occupancy permit? Because it really shouldn't be on the plan, shouldn't it?
Well, the engineer has to determine the average grade.
Right. So, the plan should give the idea to the...
Yeah. And then it'll get a certified after. Okay.
So, we should get a revised plan, shouldn't we?
Well, I think it's more for him than us.
But I'm more than happy...
It's like you put it as a condition.
I'm more than happy to provide the board with a plan showing what the height dimension is. I don't know whether any of those notes, I can't read, it's too small.
I'm talking about the condition.
But if you put it as a condition tonight, I can live with that.
So, it doesn't, as far as you're concerned?
Right.
Doesn't bother you if it's not on here?
Well, yes and no. I mean, it should have been, but it's not. Is it the underworld? No. For the future, counselor.
I would make sure that my architects have their ass down.
How about this? Why don't we condition it and send it in a revised anyway?
I will do that.
Then when it comes in, let me know. I'll come back and sign it.
That's a good idea.
I think that, I think that's an appropriate way to handle it.
And as noted, it's 30 feet.
Yes, I'm going to make a condition.
30 feet is the maximum height in the overlay district.
And this plan says 35.
Well, yeah.
The site plan says maximum building height max 35 feet in the zoning classification.
He was referencing the R3 zoning district. He didn't reference the overlay district at all on the plan.
Okay, what about the house setbacks? Do we need that on this plan from the two, house number 51, house number 59? Setback from the street for the average setback?
It is on the plan.
They're on here.
It's not on the plan. It may not be on the...
House is 11.8, I mean, house 51 is 11.8. It's on the site plan.
Oh, I see. I'm looking the wrong way.
And house 59 is 30.9.
Yeah. I'm looking, I'm looking through the wetlands. I'm sorry.
It's less than the average. I mean, more than the average.
Good, good. All right. Comments, questions, anybody on the board? Yeah, let's read in what we have here from other departments.
I believe there was a negative IDA from the Conservation Commission, as I understand it.
You should read in the inspection.
Oh, yeah. All right. So, let's see. This is from the Board of Health. Excuse me. 55 Monahansett Road. Floor panels depict three bedrooms. Sitting area is to remain open. No fourth bedroom. Septic is in compliance with three bedrooms. Okay. Inspections Department. 55 Monahansett Road. The area is within the pump and asset overlay district. Property is also within the precontact archaeologically sensitive area listed as moderate. Applicant is seeking a written finding under 174-17 to construct a 4-foot by 38.3-foot front deck and one-story 14-by-19 side yard addition. Also, looks like they are proposing a 4-foot by 11.8-foot two-story addition at the front corner of the home as well. This department would like to note that no variances for the front yard setback under 174-31 of the zoning bylaws have been applied for. Reason, as stated above, this lot is within the pump and asset overlay district. Setbacks are 25 feet from the front, 15 from the rear and side yards. When you look at the existing conditions, you will see that the front setback of the house is 25.6, which makes it in compliance with the setback requirements within the pump and asset overlay district. What is being proposed with the front 4-foot by 11.8-foot two-story addition and the 4-foot by 38.3-foot front deck now reduces the front setback from 25.6 to 21.3. This is viewed not only as a need for a variance, but also viewed as a self-imposed hardship. The front setback was in compliance, and they proposed not to be in compliance with the front setback. So, from the standpoint of the written finding, it would appear that creating a new nonconformity, the front addition and deck, by going into the front setback when the structure was in compliance, is clearly substantially more detrimental because it is increasing the nonconformity by introducing a new nonconformity, which doesn't exist before. As such, a variance would also be required in opinion of the Town of Mashpee zoning enforcement officer.
I've already, I've already addressed that. I've addressed that by demonstrating the fact that the two adjacent properties have setbacks that are less than the required setback, and when taking the average at 21.3, this conforms to the 25-foot, the average setback requirement under footnote 6 of the zoning bylaws. So, as I said, ordinarily, I would agree with you that...
I agree, but do we need to give you a variance?
No. It's conforming.
It's conforming based on the abutting homes being the average of the two abutting homes.
Correct.
That's how it's written in the bylaw?
What's that?
That's how it's written in the bylaw. You can take the average of it.
That's correct.
I agree with that.
That's what you know, because I'm...
That's not the question. The question is, do we need to issue a variance?
And I would say no. The only time you need to issue a variance is if you're varying what the bylaw requires. We're not varying what the bylaw requires because the bylaw requires either 25 feet or whatever the average setback is based upon the two abutting properties. So, at 21.3, we conform to the bylaw under footnote 6 because that is the average of the two structures on either side. So, it is a conforming condition, and we're not varying the requirement of the bylaw.
If that's what it says, then, good, because I was curious about that when we looked at the beginning before we started. I was looking at that going, how's this going to work? But now I know.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be here arguing.
Actually, when I saw it, and I saw you were bringing it, I said, why would Kevin bring this unless he has a reason?
He answered your question. I'm just dealing with a site plan with no explanation.
Yeah. When I first looked at it the other day, I didn't see the abutting information, so now it makes sense.
Okay. I don't have an issue. Anybody have an issue? Okay, let's see what Conservation says. 55 Monahansett, a very small portion of the existing porch lies within the 50-foot setback to the wetlands. However, it is not something the Conservation Department considers to be impactful. Thus, no permitting will be required for this project. Is that the most current?
Yes, I can explain. Because two things came up on this project when I was reviewing it. One was the 50-foot buffer. As it shows, it touches a small part of the, the addition over on the, what's that, the west side, south, east, west, west side. So, the question is, Conservation never really fully answered it. The other thing which was kind of interesting, which is in your file now, was that, as it shows on the plan, the flood zone, Zone A, AE, is further down. But on the town's flood map, it was like halfway through the house, so there was a discrepancy. So, I've worked with GIS coordinator. We found that a, back in 2014, a letter of map amendment was made, and so the town has to amend their flood map to reflect this, so that address that issue. But getting back to this 50-foot buffer, I spoke with Drew, and I talked to him at length, and I says, you know, you should send a letter, a better letter to the board, that's my recommendation, to address that issue, whether or not it needs to go, which is why you have it. Because if he didn't clarify that, my concern was I did want it to be an issue tonight, which would have made a continuance for clarification, so I wanted to nip that in the butt tonight. So, that's why you have that clarification from the Conservation Commission.
Right.
So, I want to read that? I don't think this is more than that.
This is a later one, I think, from...
September 27.
Yeah, you should have had something newer.
We've got two.
Two. So, what's the newest one?
John read in the first one.
Yeah, this is Monday, the 25th.
That's the new one.
This is the, well, he's got another one dated September twenty-seventh.
Oh, twenty-seventh, then.
Go ahead. Scott, go ahead.
Fifteen Monahanset Road, September twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, fifteen Monahanset Road. This has been issued a negative determination approved through the RDAA application issued on one twenty-seven twelve under Permit Extension Act.
I guess that's how they answer the question, then. But I did want to make sure that this, that, the way it looked, and I already had one member already kind of questioned whether or not it was in, just because a small part was touching. Was it gonna be an issue or not? And so that's why I went to Conservation.
Well, if I look at the existing conditions, and then they're proposed, there's no difference, it looks like regarding.
It's actually less than what.
Section being in the buffer.
It's less than what.
So I'm flipping back and forth, and I'm trying to see a difference. And I don't. I see the deck, twenty-one feet, proposed twenty-one feet. So I don't see any difference, anyway.
No, it's twenty-one, twenty-one. But it clipped the addition, so.
Well, the existing.
It went to the deck here.
And now it's gonna be enclosed, so I didn't want it to become an issue. The whole point, I didn't want a continuance. Trying to help out, counselor.
Appreciate that, appreciate that.
You tell me that now.
All right.
All right, what else do we have? Let's see. Did you read Board of Health?
I think you read them all, inspections of Board of Health.
Yeah, because I'll say if I'm not making it up.
That's it, I think, John.
Comments?
Questions or comments, anybody on the board? And Brad, you're on this one. Anybody in the audience, questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none? Scott?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the written finding for fifty-five Monahanset Road. Owners Robert H. and Mara B. Whitstein request a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen of zoning bylaws to allow for the alteration and extension of a porch, deck, and house on property located in our three zoning district in the Pompaneset Overlay District. Map one twenty-three, parcel one hundred, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of the written finding under Mash General Law forty A, section six. Two proposed improvements, ZBA plans for proposed building improvements. Fifty-five Monahanset Road, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared for Robert Whitstein, twenty-eight Bellington Street, Hollington, Mass. Engineering by Engineering Works Incorporated, twelve West Crossfield Road, Forestale, Mass. Surveying by J C Engineering Incorporated, two eight, twenty-eight fifty-four Cranbury Highway, East Wareham, Mass. Scale one inch, it goes twenty feet. Drawn by P T M, job number two twenty-five dash sixteen, date eight-ten-seventeen. Checked P T M sheet number two of two stamped by P to T McInty, Registered Civil Engineer, number three-five-one-oh-nine, dated eight-ten-seventeen. And John Churchill Jr., Registered Professional Surveyor, number forty-eight zero-six-six, dated eight-eleven-seventeen. Number three, house plan, Whitstein Residence, fifty-five Monahanset Road, Mashpee, Mass. Plan date seven-ten-seventeen, drawing by S B P, no, S P B. Scale quarter inch, it goes one foot unless noted. Architecture by S P B Residential Commercial Design and Consulting, Bochasset, Mass. A1, proposed rear elevation, proposed front elevation, proposed right elevation, proposed left elevation. Page A two, existing conditions, first floor layout, proposed second floor plan, proposed first floor plan. Number four, conditioned on all, town department comments written to the record. And number five, thirty-foot max height from average grade must be noted on a new, new plan?
New plan to be submitted to the, to the ZBA before.
Yeah, so I can sign it off. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Okay, I need two sets, please. Or one more. Just need one of the big ones, please.
We don't have, all we have is little ones.
Oh, really?
There's only one, and that big one doesn't have both pages.
There you go.
Here's another small one, if you want.
All right, good stuff. Works for me, then.
I learned something today. Average grade, you'd be.
Yeah.
It's good to know.
Maybe you stepped down.
Might have been here. There you go. All right.
I think it was when you stepped down on, and he pointed us to that.
It's good to know, because I was wondering when I looked at it the other day, how's this gonna pass? And I thought, why would Kevin bring this? He knows something.
He did.
He knew something.
He did.
It's from how you pay Kevin.
He's talking front yard. He's talking front yard, Ted, Pat?
Yeah. He brought that up at a previous hearing.
Yeah, but also, it said it on the plan, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
Haven't read it all. Perfect. All right, Jim, would you read the last new hearing, please?
Opening the hearing, sixty-six Massasoit Avenue. Owners Patrick M. and Sharon M. O'Connor request a variance of the rear property line under one seventy-four dash thirty-one of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a deck on property located in our three zoning district. Map seventy-two, parcel thirty, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
I'm gonna have Sharon sit on this one, along with the four regular board members. Hi, come right up, and for the record.
For the record, I'm Sharon O'Connor.
We'll share this.
And my husband is Patrick.
You have to share that one?
Sixty-six Massasoit Ave, Mashpee, our second home. And we are requesting a variance for a deck on the property. Of a property that was built in nineteen twenty-six. And we're shy on the setbacks.
Okay. I rode by a house yesterday, and noticed there's a, looks like a enclosed porch on the front of the house, kind of overlooking the water?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the proposed, that's the deck, that's where we would like to build the deck off of.
Okay. So where's, I'm looking at this plan. Where's the existing on this, and where's the proposed? Because all I see is proposed, so, come on up. So is the existing that?
That's the existing, correct.
And the proposed is this?
The shaded area. This is all proposed.
Okay.
Nine point two from the street.
So you wanna go, let's see, what's the setback? I'll, what is this, R five?
I think it's R three, right?
That's a question.
It's R three.
It's R three.
So the setbacks are what?
Forty or twenty-five?
Forty from the front, fifteen from the side area.
Okay.
So they wanna.
Should be on there, yep, says R three.
Thirty foot.
Yeah, it says forty on the front, and you wanna go to what?
Nine point two.
Is that, yeah, nine point two.
The house is twenty-five now, which, I don't know how that can be twenty-five, because if you go to the corner.
It's already sitting too close to each side.
Yeah, but he's got a measurement of.
For the record.
Excuse me. I believe the, the right side of the porch in the home is already sitting too close to the zone.
Three feet from Massasoit, it looks like.
Yes, yeah.
The way, the way it looks on the plan, but it looks like there's more property in the front yard, for some reason.
Okay.
It says the existing house is twenty-five feet from the street edge. I don't think that's accurate. Because you look, see what that measurement is to the corner of the house, it should be to the existing patio, because that patio is like six feet in the air.
Yeah, but that's stamped by an engineer.
Well, patio.
I'm just saying.
Excuse me, a patio is not part of the structure.
It is, if the wall is considered a supporting structure, when you get to that height, would that would be a supporting structure. If someone came to us and wanted to build a patio that big, it wouldn't be considered a landscape patio.
All right, so is there a supporting wall?
Yeah, here's the picture.
On that existing patio?
It's got a foundation around it. No, the open deck area.
Gotcha.
It's actually.
So right here?
The house is actually closer to the street than you're acting, it's actually.
So you're talking this right here?
Correct.
I agree with you.
If you look on the plan, it actually, it's closer to the street than twenty-five. The house is actually more non-conforming than what he's saying.
I can tell you, I've been on this board thirteen years, and I've never seen a request like this go through.
Excuse, sir, we were told to get these lands surveyed.
Right.
And that the, the neighborhood, if it's conformed to the neighborhood, there's a house on the left and a house on the right. And there, they seem to be already as close as we, we are.
Yep.
And we're not changing the form of the neighborhood. I think the house is already.
If you can.
You have to prove that to us.
You can bring, like, the last gentleman that came through, he brought us measurements on a plan showing what the two neighbors were.
Stamped plan.
Stamped plan, showing what the neighbors' setbacks were.
Signed off.
And you could.
Approved.
There's your, then that makes your argument.
Then you can have your argument and get the average. If the two people on both sides, say they're five feet from the street, then you could average from what you are to them.
We also need to know the, from the existing patio to the street. You can't just say, yeah, I think it's twenty-five.
I also think the side.
See how it was stamped here?
Whether that's a relative, it's already three.
Engineer's gotta come out, measure it. Measure the houses.
It is a hardship.
It's gotta be on this plan or a new plan.
House is definitely a hardship the way it sits on the lot.
We weren't told that, we needed to.
This is the lot, right?
Yeah, and the way, look at the house, how it sits.
We applied what we needed to, what we were told.
Well, if you'd like to continue it, we can certainly do that.
Well, I'm just, that's all we knew what to do, and.
Yeah.
So we did that.
Okay, if I may.
The house sits really awkward on the lot.
Yes.
You definitely have something here, but we don't have all the information we need.
Go ahead.
You're halfway there. I mean, you, yes, you, you did, you did what you're told. But the thing is, when it comes to doing an argument before the board, you have to bring in more, you know, paperwork, more proof. And what also happens, right, but that's a picture, you know what I'm saying? But you, you don't know what information that's out there, for instance.
Can't say that.
You can check with both the Board of Health and my office to see if the people next door on both sides of you, if we've got site plans already, you can use that. Letters of support from your butters, that helps too. Because this is basically a, a non-court case, but you have to present your case, your reason why. Because, don't forget, you're trying to ask for something that the bylaw says you really can't. So you have to show, well, this is the reason why, now, we feel we should have this, because we've got this, this, this. Here's the neighborhood and all that sort of deal. So, if, if you send someone down, you know, to either one of the two offices, we can check to see what we have for the, you know, on the records that may help you and, you know, and present it back before this board. But, but the thing is, I wanna go back to, is, yes, whenever anybody comes here and they wanna have something like this, or addition, whatever, yes, you're gonna have a survey plan. That's it. Anything beyond that, it, it's up to you, because we can't really get involved in preparing your case. A little bit of conflict of interest there. So, here is the best way of doing it, you know, you asked for the continuance, you now know some of the things you need, and then you can see where you can find. And how old is this?
The plan, the plan was just done on eight seventeen.
Oh, so it's, it's relatively new.
We just, hey, we just had a surveyor come out to survey.
Right. So I guess, going through the chair, there was a question someone asked about that twenty-five being accurate, but I'm, I'm making the assumption.
Might be twenty-five from there, the question is, what is it from there?
All right, so, just to be able to.
That actually helps showcase. Because it, that is closer to the street than twenty-five.
So, when you talk to this engineer, what the board's looking for is this corner to there.
We don't even need to really leave here, that, well, this is a street too. The stairs before you, that's one, but that's. But he should be, he should be doing that measurement, not that measurement. The stairs don't count.
It should have been from here to here, just like it did from there to there.
I know, but it's still, they're building this, so we need to know what that is. Because this is being added.
Yep.
More non-conforming. It's less non-conforming. There's actually, Mike, there's actually two.
So all he has to do is just put it in.
There's another measurement on there he should fix. See the, on the, on the Massasoit Ave side, see the thirteen foot to the steps?
Yes.
We don't go to the steps, so they should go from where that's, the more.
I'm gonna do this.
The more or less non-conforming would be where it attaches to the house.
I'll be right back.
Mary Ann, do you have the previous paperwork?
It'll, it'll, it actually, it'll, it'll help you.
Can I mark this?
Yeah.
There's plenty of them there.
Just approved. The last hearing.
They're looking for.
Monahanset. Do you have the plot plan?
Do it.
Measurement, because it's not from the stairs.
That shows the setbacks of the previous. Of the two neighbors.
So you're looking for that corner.
Because that's less non-conforming than that.
Yes, see it, thirty point nine. Eleven point eight. I wanna show them this.
No, I know, you don't climb the stairs. Okay, no problem. Well, this shows the stairs are.
It shows thirteen feet to the stairs, the stairs don't count. But isn't there a structure above it? We don't count that on the setback.
So from this corner, where the deck meets the house, that's what they're looking for. And then they're looking from here. If this engineer has any questions, have him contact me, and I'll talk him through it.
Now, do you still recommend that we get somebody to do the butters?
Yes, you're gonna need it because.
Come on, take a look at this. This is the plan that was just approved. This is the house. Here's the street, and this is the house. He's twenty-two-three. Look what he did here. House number fifty-one, house number fifty-nine. Thirty point nine, eleven point eight, average of the two. You need to do the same thing.
But first check to see if you're abutting property, if there's already a plan that the town has, either with the Board of Health or the Building Department, that's already there.
Then you don't have to pay the engineer.
That's right, you see?
Next question.
Yes. You buy the mic, yes, where it goes flashing.
So, directly on either side of my home, they do not have decks. It's the decks.
Doesn't matter, was it?
It's the house.
It's the house on the other, opposite side of that house, and the house on the opposite side of that one, where they have decks. Yeah, they have decks, and they all are on a corner lot, just like me.
I, I'm, I'm close to you, I live on Shorewood. I, I drive by, the houses on either, the, the two abutters do not stick out, it's the two further abutters.
On the corner lots, yeah.
Have to be the houses right next to you, the closest.
So they don't have decks?
Doesn't have to be the deck.
Oh, okay.
Any part of the house, any, any part of the structure.
Any part of the structure, closest part of the structure to the street is the number we need to know.
You definitely have Doug's, because they just did their house. And the people next door, I don't know, that house been.
I know Doug's is a little close.
It's probably as old as my house.
And Doug's is.
Is it a little closer, yeah?
Right, and I know if, and I know for a fact that's a recent.
Yeah, he just finished a remodel.
So there is one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you don't have to pay someone to do it again, just.
Yeah.
Right, it's just the people next door. Their house is probably as old as my house.
And those two.
And I don't think they've ever done anything to that house.
Never know.
There might be some.
I would say it's gonna be this one here.
It might be something on file. You don't know until you go check, and they.
Okay.
Doesn't cost anything but a walk downstairs and have someone look it up.
Yeah.
But do I have to have an official thing like that, like that one did? Or you can just have the documentation?
I would, I would see what they have, bring it in and show it to Mike, and see what he thinks.
Come up here, take a look at this. These are the houses you need. So this is your lot, correct?
Yep.
You need the setback on this house.
So this is all my house.
That's all here.
This is all me. This one to here, this is all me.
All right, then you've got this one here.
Well, you got a bunch of little lots there, didn't you, huh? So you need this guy.
So you need this one.
And this guy here.
Doug's over there.
Is across the street considered an abut?
Right, I know we got Doug's. This one over here, I don't know.
Is there, is across the street considered an abut?
Yeah.
So is there one across the street too?
That's the water.
Water.
No, it's water.
Oh, on both sides, on both streets? I know there was a water on one side, but...
So it'll be here and here.
What are you trying to do, go down the street too?
Well, if these, aren't these abutters?
Are you looking at the butters on the corner?
Read what the bylaws says. A dwelling need not be setback more than the average of the setbacks of dwellings on the lots adjacent to either side.
Okay, that's what I was asking, is across the street in the butter? It's not.
No.
Okay, you answered my question.
So Doug owns, like, there's only one other house there.
Before they pay off. But that's adjacent on either side is not across the street.
That's why he has his hand in the case.
Okay, very good.
But when you have to look at the butters, you know the guy across the street.
We can continue this to... Do you need more than two weeks? Do you need a month?
That's fine because I have to do the conservation thing anyway.
Well, what's the, what's the options?
I got October eleventh.
That's, that's two weeks.
After the year twelve.
And it'll have to be after conservation.
After conservation. So it'll be after conservation because you should be going to conservation before you come here.
Four?
Yeah. Sure.
So twelve, so we'll come down on the twenty-first.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Scott, would you make a motion?
So I make a motion that we...
Continue.
Continue. Sixty-six Massa Sawyer Ave, owner Patrick M. and Sharon M. O'Connor requesting variance of the rear property line, section one seventy-four dash thirty-one of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a deck on a property located in an R three zoning district map seventy-two, possessor thirty, Mashpee, Mass. Continued to...
October twenty-fifth.
October twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen.
Do I have a second? Sharon, do you second that?
Second.
There you go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
See you in a month.
So, one question. So I have to go to conservation before I come here?
You should, you should always go. Always go. Because we base our rulings off what they say. Among other things.
What happened, how would we have made a ruling tonight if we didn't have...
It would have been contingent.
Contingent on what their decision was.
Oh, contingent.
So you could come to us, but...
We didn't find out we had to go there today.
All right, good luck. Okay. Any paperwork to sign? No.
Thanks.
Is this, is this fine?
This page. Sorry.
We have paperwork to pass back in?
Do you need anything? I just spent the one behind me. Do you need anything right now? I'll bring it up at the end.
Just turn on the ring. Maybe I could, she'll probably need it again for the next time.
Oh, okay, then.
All right, Jim, would you read the first other business, please?
Other run, other under, other business, one eighty-five Waiting Place Road. Steve Cook, Coach Whip Bay Design, applicant requests to relocate egress platform and steps. The board is to determine if a formal modification application is required to an existing written finding, two thousand twelve dash thirty-two.
What does that have? Oh, there's no more, uh...
There's no more written.
All right. Good evening. Steve Cook from Kattua Bay Design, representing William and Dorian Wade, the owners of one eighty-five Waiting Place Road. This, as probably most of you know, this is at the corner Waiting Place and Bluff. This has been the foundation that's been sitting there for five years capped. There's been issues with the Wade family. They resolved it. The Wades want to move forward with this project. So they came in front of the board and had written finder from this board, two thousand twelve thirty-two, and then they came back for minor modifications in, in May of two thousand thirteen. So it's been sitting empty since then. So now they want to move forward. So the plans that were submitted to the boards from SPB Designs, they really weren't happy with it. So they want to change the plans. So they hired my firm to come up with a new set of plans. So in looking at this, cap foundation, we're going to take off the framing. It's in rough shape. We're going right down to the foundation and we build a whole new house. So as the site plan shows is, they had a porch on the Waiting Place roadside. They had a porch on the, I'd say, the southwest side with the egress set of stairs off that porch and an egress set of stairs on the northwest side off the porch. So in going through and evaluating this foundation, as you can see, there's a bump out here where it's at the fifteen feet, five inch area. That's the area way to get into the basement, this set of stairs. And you can see it right here on this plan circled, right here. So when, when you go out and look at the foundation, it's popped out of the ground anywhere from fourteen to sixteen inches high and it's pretty flat grade. So when you take that, try to put a floor on top of it, it's, you're going to be up there about thirty inches out of ground. So when I looked at this area way, it's only ten foot, three long outside, outside, take away sixteen inches. It's far less. So when you try to put a set of stairs down into the basement, you run out of room. There's not enough length to do treads and rises. And even this plan showed a gas fireplace above it. So this plan wouldn't even work, wouldn't meet any co-re requirements because you would hit your head coming down the stairs. And then, you know, then they show in the porch in the back, there's no, you know, steps off the platform, no steps off the platform there. So this plan is a deficient plan. It does not meet co-re requirements, does not work. So, so going through it, we wanted to figure out how to make this work. So we came up with a whole new house plan design where I have a set of stairs going down into the basement, but I, what I need is a platform and I had to move a, a door to get out onto that. So I had to do a new platform. So right now is, this, the plan I had showed a couple egress steps here, which I, I moved to the other side. And there were egress steps in the back, which we took off. So the only, so the second means of egress out of this house is coming out this door.
So that, the platform's going to be below grade?
The platform, no, it's above grade. There's egress platform here. So this is my second means of egress out of the house. But I am no closer to the lot line than what is there now.
I thought it was, I thought it was going into the basement.
Well, this is, this area is right here. This is the, this is the basement access. So what I'm, I'm, well, what I'm looking for is I need an egress platform to step out of this door. Then I need to step down to the door to the basement. And this is why I did the small little detail here. And I have a set of plans I can pass out to the board.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And there's no, no roof above it, no, no columns, no roof. I mean, I've always looked at stairs, stairs and landings as not part of setbacks, so I don't have any issue.
Right, so that was my concern, which goes to Adam.
The, the only issue I'd see coming up is bec... Is that stairway going down covered?
Yes, it is.
Was it covered before?
Yes, it is.
It got a little bit, so it's going to throw the lot coverage off a little bit?
No, no, it's the same size. So this, this part right here is, is like, what's it now?
I thought you were making that longer.
No, no, it's staying the same.
Oh, okay, so the lot coverage isn't going to change.
As you can see, the details on my plan here, I worked out the details. So here's the door, I have to come out of first floor.
Yeah.
I step out to a platform, then I have to come over and do two rises down to a platform at the foundation, let's say now.
Okay, so it's not the egress to the basement?
Then I run a set of stairs down to make it go into the basement.
So you didn't have an issue with the, the foundation for the stairs on the basement? You, your question is, you have to add that platform out back.
Correct, yes. And since I wasn't involved with this before, I just wanted to run through the board, make sure there's no issues with adding the platform here for my second means of egress.
If there's no structure above it, as one member, I don't see any issue with it because it's just a landing instead of stairs. You have to have the landing by code to open a door. So it has to have the landing. It's a minimal sized landing.
Yeah.
And, um...
And then, then, then what you have is you have the landing, you have two rises down to a platform which is...
It doesn't affect the...
Eight inches above grade.
It, it doesn't affect the setback because it's not coming out any more than that foundation is before.
That's what shows on the site.
And even if it did, it's a landing and says that, we don't look at that as part of the setback. It's a fairly square lot.
Says right here on this, uh, note nineteen, it says, "Open decks of platforms used for egress projecting no more, no more than four feet."
All right, is that more than four feet? Is that foundation?
The dimension is three foot nine is what I have right now.
Okay, perfect. Um, that's why I asked if there's any columns or any, if he's building a roof structure over, because he, that would be an issue.
So do you want to make that as a condition?
Did no structure above it.
Well, you can't have a roof or whatever.
Um, sure.
That's his issue.
Well, we're not making a, because we're not making a motion or anything.
No, I was just asking for the opinion, saying, "Do I need to come back for another minor modification?"
I mean, honestly, there's ways around it. You can get a roof above there with brackets. It's not an issue. But I, as one member, have seen no issue with this at all. And that deck, it was all approved before, I'm sorry, was all that, size of that deck was approved before? Because I don't have any of the existing ones approved before.
Yeah, yeah. This is, this is the same footprint that's in now. Everything is the same. Nothing has changed.
This is just the...
So you're not changing the foundation whatsoever?
No.
No, but I'm talking about the deck size.
We're just changing the, um...
Because that's part of the lot coverage.
The architectural plans are changing for that house also.
Yeah, but that doesn't, none of them.
We have first floor, second floor and...
Well, probably the elevations changed too.
There's the elevations right there.
It's the style of the house. Yeah, the elevations changed, but...
Yeah, I know.
And you have the thirty foot under control, the thirty foot height restriction under control?
Yep.
This?
Yeah, the elevations right there. We're right at, you can see this dimension. I have a dimension, without doing cross-section, I'm at twenty-nine feet nine right now. So it's going to be tight to thirty.
Well, that's a...
So Steve, one question.
That goes to him, I don't know.
What's different on this plan than the original?
I don't think you do.
That guy?
Yeah, and then the original had a porch here in the back. You see this dash line here? There was a porch here and a porch there. So this rear porch is going away.
So it flies by when you have a...
Still under a roof, but it's...
It's not an extension of the roof.
Right, it's still the same footprint.
I don't see any reason he needs to...
Well, it's only difference...
The porch is actually going to become part of the house.
Correct. But the footprint's the same, so...
I, I don't, I don't know all the...
What was this before?
That was a porch. Oh, it was a porch.
To come back to us for anything.
So you're just really enclosing a porch and you're putting this...
Egress platform.
And this is on the first floor.
Footprint hasn't changed. It was, that was approved as a deck before.
Does it go down that way?
Yeah.
Stairs go that way?
Yeah.
And we're looking at setbacks.
There, goes that way.
I'm a little confused. This goes down?
Yeah, that goes down to the basement. Yeah.
Why would elevations matter to us? That wasn't me, that was you.
Yeah, see the detail right here?
Ah-huh. There we go.
Platform. I come across, I go, sure, it's a low platform, it's above grade. See the top of the foundation?
If he was changing something on the footprint, it may be, kind of an issue.
And that's why I did the detail because this, the original plan did not figure this out. The original plan, because I looked at it, I said, "There's no way it's going to work." You didn't have enough treads and run for treads and rises.
So this is a regular, just a regular patio on the ground.
When we approve...
So, and these are the two steps going down to the patio?
Yes.
When we, when we approved this project the first time, we don't approve the elevations that, when we approved the house plans.
Yeah, because you staffed it.
So if we approve those house plans and he's changing the house plans, then I guess he does have to come back just to, you know, it's kind of a, just so we can approve the new house plan. If that, if that's what it is, if that plan was approved and that's what was recorded, that, that house plan by that other rock...
It is a change.
It's a change. Now I think you do because we approved that SPB plan.
Right.
That's what's unfiled at the registry of deed.
This is not what...
No, this is approved. So we have to, I think you have to come back, just as a change.
And it's a formal thing. It's just a formal thing.
Just talk to you guys to hash this through to figure out what do I need.
I think just so the records are all clear down the road, so someone ever comes back and you say, "Wait a minute, this isn't even the house that was approved. How this house could go?"
That way when Charlie goes out there and he sees it, he goes, "Ah."
Yeah, yeah, it won't, it won't match up, yeah, definitely.
I think, I think he needs...
I want to comment if it matches. Like Charlie wouldn't even, they'd sit in the office before you issued a permit. So these don't match up.
Yeah, I think you kind of, just so the records are straight, are clear, so it can be rerecorded.
Yep.
And then it's all in our file.
So there's no, nothing coming back to haunt anybody.
It's not going outside the footprint, but the plans have to match.
That's right.
Yeah, because that plan, I forgot, the plan was stamped.
In my opinion, just as one member, I would say you have to come back in, ask for a minor modification, file all the plans as it's going to actually be done, so that our records are correct. We don't consider, I don't consider this a major...
No, this is minor.
Deal. This would be minor and it would be kind of...
And we have to just read in the new plans, the dates and all that and stamp them in.
Okay.
Because you have to advertise that.
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know why you would have to. You're not, you're not...
I don't believe so.
I don't know how it works. You're not changing anything on the footprint or setbacks. There's nothing anybody can come but...
Last time you did, didn't you?
You do think?
Last time she did.
Then we should do it again.
And do it.
And do it again?
Be consistent.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, I don't see any issues. It's more of a procedural thing.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's right.
Then there's no coming back later on. This is not the house that got approved.
I kind of thought that would happen, but I, that's why I wanted to just run out, get everybody's opinion, thoughts on it before I go.
So you need to file with Mary, with Mary Ann a formal...
On the twenty...
Send her all back.
Too late.
Too late, okay. All right, so what's the next?
What do you have to advertise, Mary Ann? How many times?
October eleventh.
October twenty-fifth.
Next one's October eleventh followed by the twenty-fifth.
So the twenty-fifth would be the quickest.
Yeah, but that's too late for that one.
I was wondering what happens, why that lot never get built.
Yeah, it was a family issue. I, I wasn't privy to it. I was just told it was a family issue.
Don't want to be privy to it.
And they just resolved it.
That's a hazard too, having that deck rotting away on there.
Well, at least...
Having that plywood deck on there.
Right now, as far as the building code goes, as long as it's counted.
There was one in my neighborhood that a city foundation went in.
Everybody turn everything in on this?
I'll reuse all the paperwork.
Because it was rotting and caving in.
Right.
It wasn't safe. They made them rip it out. Then they, then they ripped the foundation out.
The foundation.
Everything out. And then, and then they put a new house in. That's that modular home that went in on Northway. I don't know if you were here when that got put in. It was a modular home, guy from New Hampshire came down.
Motion.
But he had to put a whole new found, rip the whole thing out.
Hey, who sent the motion back?
No, the town made him rip the foundation up and fill it in because it was a hazard now. Because when they took the cap off, it was a big hole.
It's messy, so...
Yeah, and it collapsed. It was collapsing, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's different.
Yeah, so then they, hey, he had to rip the whole thing out and they filled it. Then another guy came in and put a new foundation.
That's a bright white.
The informal request is, our answer to the informal request is you need to refi, you have to file a minor modification with existing...
So Steve, you're good? You understand? We're all, we're on the same page?
File for a minor modification to change the architectural plans and to show a new egress platform.
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay. November eighth.[1651.12]
November 8th?
Wow. That's a-
November 8th is fine, I'm wide open that night.
Okay, wow. Very good.
Just ran right by.
November 8th, I might not be here for that one.
Well, thank you very much, yeah, that's, I just, like I said, I just wanted to get the opinion and make sure we're doing this correctly.
I will not be here for that one.
No issues, so.
I think we all agree.
Beautiful, thank you.
Well done.
Uh, suggestion? When you file, because this is like the third time modifications come up, can you kind of make sure they're happy with this? Because I don't know, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just speaking, I saw how many times it's gonna keep coming back.
Yeah, I went through this plan with the Wades, they're very happy with this. I'm gonna meet with them on Monday to go through it one more time and say, this is it, and-
They're signing off on it, are they? He can't say it with a straight face.
And what I'll do is, I'll do a cross-section so we can verify the height before we go too far down the road, because the height on an elevation sometimes could be off a few inches versus when you do the cross-section with the details. So, I'll make sure I have a cross-section that you guys will feel happy that's verified.
Great, appreciate it.
That's one of the issues there, this, this foundation is, like I said, 14 to 16 inches out of the ground already.
Right.
You throw another 14 inches of floor on it, you're up at 30 inches.
Three, almost 300 yards around.
You know, you're limiting your height already.
It's not an attractive, yeah, oh, wide parts of total.
A beach ripping it out, right?
Oh, yeah.
That's not in a flood zone, is it? It's out of it?
No.
No, I'm just making, I'm asking the question.
Never know.
Don't need any more surprises.
And, and just to throw in another piece, all the neighbors are in support of-
Well, they're probably sick of, yeah. I'm sure they're sick of looking at that.
But I think I just mentioned it, for what it's worth, it asked a question.
No, I appreciate that, yeah.
It asked now than later.
I remember we put that in there.
Okay.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Yeah, you too, Steve. All right, Jim, would you read the last other, well, the next other business?
Yes, 34 Rainbow Lane. Owner Phil Jackson requests an informal discussion from the board to determine if a special permit application is required to allow for a bucket truck and dump truck on property located in an R3 zone.
Anyone here?
I called him a couple of times, he never called me back, so.
What do we do if he's not here?
I don't think we can hear.
We cannot hear.
We can have a more, an informal discussion to not hear it.
All I can add is that the gentleman came to the counter and asked the question about being able to have a bucket truck and a dump truck in a residential neighborhood, and I went, uh, you know, you couldn't have to go to the board because you're outside of my, um-
Did he come or did an abut come?
No, he showed up, he came in.
I'm sure there's something in the bylaw.
Only, the only thing the bylaw talks about is-
Commercial vehicles?
Yeah, and there's one, it's about the size of, not more than one commercial vehicle per lot, not to exceed two tons capacity.
Right.
So, I said, well, he, he didn't have the information of what the tonnage of the vehicle was. So, I'm going, well, you can have an informal meeting with the board, have the information, have the discussion, because, um, it, it's, it's unreal, and as we know-
What's the number on that?
Uh, number 2I2.
It's IJ, right? It looks like IH.
174 what?
Yeah.
31I?
Yes, I, no, I2.
I2. So, when he comes back-
Right.
This would be the only area you'd have.
Because just to remind the board-
Can't put it over as well.
I gotta go wait to the beginning here, bear with me.
Can't go over as well to the side yet.
174 24. Set the page, K. Wherever use is not specifically listed in the Section 174-25 table of use regulations, said use may be allowed, if a finding is made by the zoning board appeals, that said use may be allowed in a specific district on the basis that it is subsequently similar in its construction, operation, traffic, environment impact to a specific use allowed as of right or by special permit in said district, and it is substantially dissimilar in those respects from any uses prohibited in the district. So, that's why he was coming here to have the conversation.
What do his neighbors say?
I know what my neighbors would say.
Well, you know, and, uh-
So, informal discussion, then he, probably, in all likelihood, then, the informal discussion, I would think, would result in us telling him he'd need to file. Because he's asking for parking more than what the zoning allows right now, which is one commercial vehicle not to exceed two tons.
Correct.
He's asking to-
And like I said, it's- I have no idea what the bucket truck weight, because they vary. I mean, it could be something small to, you know, something like N-Star.
I think something like that would need to be filed and advertised so that the neighbors do have a chance to comment, because they may not know what's going on.
Also, brings up parking on his lot. What does he have for parking?
I drove by, he had three cars in his driveway and a whole load of lumber in it front of it, too.
Do you know who this guy is?
No, he doesn't live, I just drove by the house to see what, what it was like. So, he already has three regular personal vehicles in the front yard. And he-
Is he in the driveway?
It's a U-shaped, well, horseshoe one.
What is he, a tree business, he's got a bucket truck, like a landscape tree guy?
He just came and asked another question.
Tree guy?
Yeah, because that's what, it was all but, all logs just piled half passes.
He's running the business out of there, is what it sounds like.
It's Phil Jackson.
Oh my, do I know Phil Jackson?
All right, well, he's not here, so we will-
Do you have any recruiting violations?
All right, so our recommendation on this informal hearing, since he's not here, if he asks, he needs to come in front of the board and request a special permit, and he has to give us the weight of the trucks, et cetera.
Yeah.
And it's got to be advertised.
Is that, is it his home?
It, it's a residential, yes.
Residential.
And the, and the lots are fairly small, too.
Is it his home or you don't know if it's his home?
As far as I know, it's his home.
So, that's-
Is it his home? He must own the property, right? Yeah, but I mean, is it his house, or is he just renting the space?
All right.
Don't know. That's the whole point of having the conversation.
There you go.
Would you read the, would you read the last other business?
Make a motion to approve the September 13, 2017 meeting minutes.
And I was not here, I'm not voting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So, you had five. I abstained because I wasn't here. So did Sharon. All right, Tom, it's now time.
I'm making a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night.